Councilman Baji, here.
Councilman Walker?
Here.
Mayor Wheaton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eldridge?
Here.
Councilman Gilbert?
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those who wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by the Honorable Dwight Henry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray, shall we? Heavenly Father, we're grateful people. We're so grateful for all your blessings. Your Word tells us you daily love us with benefits and help us never to take any of them for granted. We thank you for this wonderful community and this council that leads us, Father. We thank you that your Word says if any of you lack wisdom, do it and ask up God and He gives it to all men liberally. We thank you that our council has your wisdom. We thank you that your Word says that we should trust in you with all our heart, lean not to our own understanding, and all our ways acknowledge you, and you will direct our paths. Thank you that you're directing the paths of leadership of this city. And we receive these things now by faith in the name of your Son and our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
No changes, Mayor.
Do I have a motion?
To move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the council? Go ahead and vote on that.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. For A, consider resolution R 250913 honoring Leisure Services Director Rick Woods upon the occasion of his retirement. Mr. Mills?
Yes, Mayor. We have drafted a resolution honoring Rick for his nearly four decades of service and going missing, but I'd ask you to read the resolution if you wouldn't mind.
I will try to read it as well as Rick does when he hosts the Christmas in the Park. I'm not going to do it as well, but I will try here. "A resolution honoring and commending the extraordinary career of Rick Woods. Whereas it is fitting and proper that the City of Cookeville should pause to recognize those individuals whose professional careers have been marked by distinguished service, visionary leadership, and a steadfast commitment to enriching the lives of others; and whereas Mr. Rick Woods has devoted nearly four decades to the advancement of parks, cultural arts, and leisure services for the citizens of Cookeville, thereby leaving an indelible mark upon the fabric of this community; and whereas Mr. Woods began his service to the people of Cookeville in 1985 at the Drama Center, now known as the Cookeville Performing Arts Center, before becoming the first cultural arts superintendent of the newly established Department of Leisure Services and Public Facilities in 1987; and whereas in the year 2000, Mr. Woods was appointed Director of Leisure Services and Public Facilities, a position he has held with distinction for 25 years during which he has guided the department with wisdom, creativity, and a deep devotion to the department's guiding motto, 'Make the Good Life Better.' And whereas under his inspired leadership, the city has witnessed the creation, expansion, and revitalization of countless projects, including the opening of Enzor Sink Natural Area and Capshaw Park, the construction of Kane Creek Recreational Center and GEM, the expansion of Dogwood Park from 1.6 to 9.5 acres, and the creation of Dogwood Performance Pavilion, the redesign of CPAC, the renovation and relocation of Cookeville History Museum, the opening of Parkview Skate Park, the development of Kane Creek Dog Park, and the expansion of Kane Creek by 47-plus acres, among many other things. Whereas Mr. Woods also championed enduring programs such as Backstage Series at CPAC, the School of Dance, and the Cultural Arts Support Team, each of which continues to foster creativity, volunteerism, and community spirit; and whereas through his tireless work, Mr. Woods has elevated the quality of life for all who call Cookeville home, ensuring that generations of residents and visitors alike benefit from parks, programs, and cultural opportunities that both inspire and unite. And whereas in recognition of his extraordinary career, Mr. Woods was honored in 2024 with the prestigious Citiescape Lifetime Achievement Award, a testament to the breadth and depth of his influence upon the community; and whereas Mr. Woods will officially retire on October 3rd tomorrow, concluding a remarkable 38-year career defined by excellence, innovation, and an unwavering love for the City of Cookeville. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Cookeville, Tennessee, that we do hereby commend and honor Mr. Rick Woods for his exemplary service, extend to him our deepest gratitude for his many contributions, and wish him continued happiness, health, and fulfillment in the years ahead. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be entered into the official minutes of the City Council and presented to Mr. Woods as a lasting expression of high esteem in which he is held by the City of Cookeville. Mr. Woods, would you like to come accept this?
I'll be brief. They said I had to speak, so that's why I'm doing this. So, thank you very much for this honor. It's been...I'm humbled. I'm overwhelmed. I'm filled with a sense of pride for what we've accomplished and a deep appreciation for the people with whom I've had the opportunity to work. This expansion and growth would not have been possible without the support and encouragement of current and previous city councils. Dwight was mayor when our department was created in 1987. But the encouragement and support of this council, previous city council members, city managers, and incredibly talented and dedicated professional staff, whose commitment and loyalty and belief in our mission has been unwavering. And of course, community members who have participated in, supported, and believed in the work that we do. My retirement is somewhat bittersweet. There are great, exciting new developments on the horizon, many of them in the works, as you are well aware, and new opportunities for parks and recreation and leisure services in our community. I will miss being a part of all of that. I will miss the camaraderie and the friendships and the closeness that we've had and the daily interactions that I've been able to have with all of my colleagues here. But I know that the best is yet to come for our department. Chad McDonald will do a terrific job in this role, and I can't wait to see what's next. Thank you. It's been an honor to serve this community. Your trust, involvement, and support have made this job more fulfilling than I could ever have imagined. So I hope that my work here has in some small way enhanced the quality of all of your lives. Thank you.
Well, to make this official, I need a motion to vote on the resolution for Mr. Woods. Do I have a motion?
To move.
I've got...it sounds like I've got a motion and a second all across the board. Motion from Councilman Walker, second from Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the council? I know, I will just say, it's going to be hard to see you go, but what you have done, like we said in the resolution, will leave a lasting impression on Cookeville and on the citizens. So, thank you for all your work. I do think it's time. I think you've earned your retirement with all the work you've done. But thank you for being a friend, for being a leader, and for bringing Cookeville to the magnificent place that it is now. Mayor?
Yeah, I think, Rick, I've known you for a little bit, even before I was on council, and it was a pleasure working with you just now, obviously, but even then, just little things. But you're going to be missed. That deep voice during the Christmas in the park will be missed.
I didn't get him to come back.
Was he coming back?
I was not.
He's not coming back. So Chad, you're going to get that deep voice.
(laughing)
But you are going to be missed, sir, and appreciate everything you've done.
I just want to say, I appreciate your attention to detail. I know when we've asked questions, you've had answers because you have such a vast amount of institutional knowledge, you know, with your number of years here. So, your leadership is going to be missed. And I know you've got big shoes to fill, but I'm confident that Chad's going to do a great job filling in for you.
Rick, I'd just like to say, you are one of the few people who've been so engaged with so many people in our community. And I know that because I know you from when I was a little kid and all the things at CPAC. (laughing) Because I think you got started about the time I was born. But all the things that you've done in the last eight years on the council and all the new work that you've ushered in, and just the last little bit of your career has been amazing. And so, we really do appreciate you and everything that you've given to the community.
Yeah, likewise. Thank you's not enough. The list of accomplishments speaks for itself. But I just want to say thank you for your style of leadership. And every time we were either engaged in a group setting or looked at one particular item, I just can't say thank you enough for the way you handle things and sure have enjoyed working with you.
Mayor, let me say that I've known Rick for, went on 30 years, and I know he struggled in reaching this decision to retire and when to retire. We've had a lot of conversations over the last couple of years. And I believe he's at peace with it because I've never seen him smile as much as he smiles. Every time I see him now, he's got a big old smile on his face. So, you know, I'm so happy for him and just appreciate everything he's done for the City of Cookeville.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. For B, presentation of distinguished citizen award. Chief Winfrey, excuse me.
Could I have Mr. Earl Barber and Mr. Jonathan Hutchins up here? So, Mayor and council, and members of the public, every year, per our policy, we recognize employees and citizens for their meritorious actions and exceptional performance. And it is my privilege to present these awards this year. Like I said, we are presenting the distinguished citizen award to two deserving citizens, Mr. Earl Barber and Mr. Jonathan Hutchins. So Sergeant McCurry nominated Mr. Barber, who on April the 2nd of this year helped rescue a mother and daughter who were trapped inside a crashed vehicle that was on its top. Mr. Barber entered the vehicle through the broken rear window and assisted them to safety through another window which had been broken out. He helped cover them up and make sure they weren't struck by the broken glass. And he remained in the vehicle till they were safely removed. So, Mr. Barber, I'd like to present you this plaque. So Detective Faw nominated Mr. Hutchins, who on March the 4th of this year, came out of his room at a local motel after hearing a crash in the parking lot. A vehicle had run off the roadway and struck five other vehicles in the parking lot. He saw the driver, who was intoxicated, arguing with an elderly gentleman that was also a resident there at the motel. Mr. Hutchins attempted to calm the man down, but the man struck him in the face. He was able to restrain this man until police officers arrived, and his actions prevented the driver from assaulting anyone else or from playing the scene. So, Mr. Hutchins, I would like to proudly issue this distinction.
Thank you. We've got some more awards to present tonight, so on to 4C, presentation of Chief's Award of Excellence.
So, the best way I can describe Officer Gibbs' professionalism and dedication is to read what Detective Matheny wrote his supervisors. So, Officer Matheny...or Detective Matheny wrote, "Just wanted to give a shout out to you about Gibbs and your guys. Yesterday, I went to roll call and put out some information about a group of criminals involved in burglaries and dope around the city. Once again, Gibbs used his magic," and trust us, at the Police Department, we understand that, "to locate the vehicle early in the shift. In doing so, he identified the suspect, take him into custody. Gibbs did not quit there, though. He went beyond the stop, running a slew of tools in the car. Those tools are believed to be stolen out in the county. This case also assisted in identifying suspects in numerous cases worked by the Putnam County Sheriff's Office. Sergeant McCurry noted that Officer Gibbs has received similar positive counseling forms like this in the past. It has almost become routine, though it goes above and beyond what is expected from your average patrol officer. Officer Gibbs continues to prove that what an amazing asset he is to every division within our department." So, Officer Gibbs?
Next, we've got 4D, the presentation of Life Saving Medal.
All right. Officer Atkinson? So in May, Officer Hayden Atkinson responded to a residence on Copper Springs Circle regarding an unconscious male. The man had no pulse and was grayish in color. He moved the man from a bed to the floor to properly perform CPR. While doing so, he instructed another officer on how to prep the AD and the bag valve mask. He performed CPR for about four minutes before the Cookeville Fire Department and EMS arrived. He continued to assist until the man regained a pulse. A couple of weeks ago, the gentleman that he helped resuscitate, his wife, and their four children came to the Police Department to meet Officer Atkinson and to thank him. And they are Japanese, and they were moving back to Japan the following day, but they wanted to meet him. So, let's see. Hayden?
Got one more here. 4E, the presentation of the Officer of the Year 2024.
Come on up. So as a 30-year veteran of our department, Officer Mike Green consistently sets the standard for dedication and performance in the area of traffic safety. Even as he prepares for his retirement, which will be coming up shortly, from July 2024 to June of 2025, Officer Green ranked third for the most traffic stops and second for the most citations issued and led the department with the highest citizen to traffic stop ratio. Much of his focus has been on distracted driving. Knowing that many of the crashes that officers work every day are often caused by a driver on a cell phone or are distracted in some other way, it is my honor to present my friend, Officer Mike Green, with Officer of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Winfrey. That was a great way to start off a meeting. Moving on to 5A, Old Business. Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on September 18, 2025. Is there a motion?
To move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, seconded by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the council? Go ahead and vote on that.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you for the consent agenda. 6A, set a date 11/6/25 for a public hearing on Ordinance O 251018, amending the zoning code, Section 221CL Local Commercial and Section 222CG General Commercial, to permit subdividing commercial units on individual lots upon review by the Planning Commission. 6B, consider declaring a surplus, 1/2005 Kia Optima. I know some people are sad about that. 6C, consider declaring surplus vehicles. 6D, consider awarding bid for 500 LED caretakers. 6E, consider awarding bid for 120 LED Gaalions. Am I saying that right? 6F, set a date 11/6/25 for a public hearing on Ordinance O 251018, closing a portion of Baron Court. That is it for the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
To the move.
Motion made by Councilman Walker, seconded by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the council? Okay, go ahead and vote on that.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7A, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, Ordinance O 250916, amending the zoning code, Section 204.15, garbage waste containers, and Illustration 24 dumpster detail. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our Public Works Department has proposed amendments to the zoning code relative to solid waste services. Ordinance O 250916 includes revisions to Section 204 supplemental district regulations, Section 204.15, garbage waste canisters, to delete language that allows dumpsters to be located in areas where they are not visible from a public street. This change would require dumpster screening for all new dumpster locations with developed sites in the City of Cookeville. The ordinance also includes revisions to Illustration 24 dumpster pad detail to include dimensions relative to spacing and clearance standards for a dumpster pad enclosure. The revised detail specifies placement for gate rods that allow the enclosure gates to stay open and not impede a sanitation truck during pickup. The detail clarifies the dumpster pad shall use compacted base stone at a minimum depth of eight inches under the poured concrete slab. Notes have been added to specify that the enclosure walls and gate posts shall be placed outside of the required 11-foot minimum clearance requirements. The revised detail clarifies that enclosure screening shall consist of block, brick, or wood privacy fence. Contact information for inspection prior to and after construction have also been included. After Monday's work session, an additional note has been included stating this is a typical standard detail. Alternate walkthrough access and other minor modifications can be submitted for approval by the Public Works Department. These revisions have been proposed to alleviate problems Public Works is experiencing with providing solid waste services. The revisions are recommended by the Planning Commission as recommended by the Planning Division. I request your approval and happy to answer any questions on these.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
To move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. This is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing portion. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Any discussion from the council? Okay, seeing none. We've got a motion and a second, so we'll go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7B, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, Ordinance O 250917, amending the zoning code relative to driveway surfacing requirements for residential developments in single-family residential zoning districts. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Currently, Section 205.7C of the zoning code, that's parking and other requirements, states parking lots and driveways shall be surfaced with Portland cement concrete or asphaltic concrete as specified on the Cookeville subdivision regulations, and be so constructed to provide for adequate drainage and prevent the release of dust. The RS 2015107.5 and RD districts reference Section 205.9 with regard to access and curb cuts, which outline standards for the number, width, and separation of access points in driveways. Our RM8, which is a single-family and multifamily district, provides for parking areas and driveways for all uses except single-family detached uses shall be paved. The RM14 district includes language stating parking areas and driveways for all uses except existing single-family detached uses shall be paved. In the RM14 district, single-family development is not permitted by right. So that's why that's the way it is. The Public Works Department has proposed an amendment to require residential driveways to be surfaced to the back of the rightway or a distance of 10 feet into the driveway. Public Works may evaluate driveways with severe slope into the public rightway for a greater area to be surfaced. The surfaced areas must meet the servicing requirements of 205.7C of the zoning code. So this ordinance would amend in the RS 20, RS 15, RS 10, RS 7.5, RS 5, the RD, and RM8 zoning districts to include the following language. "Driveways shall be surfaced to the back of the public rightway or for a distance of 10 feet into the driveway, whichever is further. The Public Works Department may evaluate driveways with severe slope into the public rightway for a greater area to be surfaced. Surface portion must meet the servicing requirements of 205.7C of the zoning code." So we feel like this provides clarification and alleviates some safety issues we have with gravel washing into the street. This change has been recommended by the Planning Commission as recommended by the Planning Division. I recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
To move.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. This is also a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for anyone who'd like to speak on this agenda item. Go ahead and compare, if you will, name, county, yeah.
Jeff King, resident here representing myself. Just a quick question. How many people do we expect that this would affect in terms of new costs?
Do you have any of that information?
This would be applicable to all new, single-family. It would apply to any new housing in single-family districts. This is a perceived safety issue with gravel washing into the street, and the intent of this amendment is to clarify and prevent that from happening.
So this would be, but new construction only, so not old construction?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, we will close the public hearing portion. Any comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, all vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7C, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security for highway safety grants. Chief Winfrey.
Mayor and council, these are the Tennessee Highway Safety Office grants that we have been fortunate enough to receive over the past several years. They include the Network Coordinator Grant, $25,000, the DUI Enforcement Grant at $49,999.80, the Teen Traffic Safety for $24,150, child passenger safety at $21,000, for a total of $120,100.
of $120,149.80. These funds are used to pay for training, overtime, and equipment. The grant period runs from October 1st of 2025 through September 30th of 2026. There is no match, and I request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Walker, sorry, I know who you are. It's almost full, right?
I was second.
Okay, you were the second, okay, good.
It looks like free money, so I think we...
Yes, yes, any discussion, yes. All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and vote on that.
5 yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, consider authorizing to apply for Tennessee Division of Forestry Community Tree Planting Grant to acquire trees for public properties. Ms. Elrod.
Mayor and Council, this is our TAE grant that we submit every year to the Tennessee Agriculture Enhancement Program. It is a 50/50 match grant for trees to be planted in the city of Cookeville. I have worked with Matt Billings, our grant writing from the Planning Department, and Zach Summers, our horticulturist from Leisure Services. Most of these trees proposed for this year's TAE grant will be located in our parks, specifically the Kane Creek Park Expansion, Dogwood Park, and then also some medians like Neal Street, Hollins Park Boulevard, and a few replacement trees where we've seen some die or get hit by cars. So the total grant we are submitting for 154 trees to be planted here in the city. We will plant those with our city crews, Public Works, and Leisure Services staff. So the cost will be $16,334 just for the purchase of the trees, and we will install those in-house. And that will be a 50/50 match once that is done. So if you have any questions, please let me know, but I do request your approval to submit this grant.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
Thank you for all the effort. We want to applaud all the trees, the flowers. I mean, your department's doing great.
Zach Summers and Matt Billings have done the most this year on this grant, so applaud them for their effort in getting our parks with more trees.
You want to comment? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. 5 yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
7E, consider awarding bid for 2025 Rebecca Place Low Pressure Sewer System Project. Mr. Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, this map shows the area there near Rebecca Place subdivision. This project will serve 140 parcels, give or take. The construction time will be about 180 days. We received five bids, with the low bid being Basely Excavating out of Crossville. We're one man, $13,970, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
5 yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7F, consider approval to purchase one spare 2500 KVA transformer for the water treatment plant generator project. Mr. Turner.
Earlier, the council approved us purchasing a transformer for the generator project at the water treatment plant. We'll end up with three transformers all alike down there, and we were wishing to purchase a spare transformer. The company's honoring the original price, which is $76,511, and they estimate a 12-week delivery time, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
Yeah, I'd like to say, you know, with the 12-week lead time, it's critical, I think, for us. I'm glad we're doing this spare. Because with that kind of lead time, you don't have your transformer. We could potentially be in bad shape.
Yes.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, take a vote.
5 yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. 7G, consider Resolution R-251115, support for recurring funds for the Tennessee Short Line Railroad Programs. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, Dr. Chuck Walmuck, who's our representative on the Nashville and Eastern Railroad Authority, has informed me that the authority is requesting that the city council adopt a resolution expressing the city's support for recurring annual funding of $20 million from TDOT for the Tennessee Short Line Railroad Program, which goes across the state, includes more areas than just the Nashville and Eastern Railroad Authority, and requests that this begin in fiscal year 2627. The resolution for the council states such support and requests that the governor include said funding in his FY 2627 budget, and I'd recommend your approval of Resolution 251115.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
5 yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And 7H, consider authorizing CRMC to purchase property at 337 North Cedar Avenue. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members of the Board of Trustees of the Cook Regional Medical Centers requesting the approval and authorization from the city council to purchase property located at 337 North Cedar Avenue for an amount not to exceed $750,000. Said property is identified as parcel nine on Putnam County Tax Map 53B Group J, and is owned by Susan Dobbs. The property consists of about .183 acres, or 7,992 square feet. There is a structure, according to the assessor's office, of 3,763 square feet, a commercial building located on the property. The Board of Trustees has adopted a resolution to purchase the property and is requesting permission from the council to do so.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Walker. I'll second the motion. Any discussion from the public on this? Discussion from council? I will say, coming from the board, we did pass this unanimously. We do realize that the price is a lot, but the hospital is currently expanding. We're going to be building a new ER, South Tower. This will be used for parking. It is part of our master plan to expand the hospital in this area, and so it is something that, looking forward, looking ahead, which I think the city and the hospital are both really good at doing, is going to be a good investment, so.
I think we've all heartburned over this a little bit, and I know you have too, but it's critical path.
It's, yeah. Like I said, this is worth strategic planning for five, 10 years down the road. Again, Cookeville's growing, the hospital's growing. It's a piece of property that is contiguous with what they have now and looking for more land, so.
I would like to say, I mean, on the line of purchasing property, it is important to do these things early. These properties can tend to get rehabbed, more money put into them, more businesses put into them, and that price can go even further down the road, so that's why I do support this now, getting this done.
Any other comment? Okay, we will go ahead and take a vote.
5 yes, motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the agenda portion of this meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to the city council on any non-agenda items? Oh, yes, go right ahead. If you'll state your name and whether you live in the city or county, and...
Hello?
Oh, yes, yeah, definitely.
Ooh.
Okay.
Do you remember?
Yeah, I was about to say, yes, uh-huh. I'm assuming you're Adam? Okay.
My name is Adam Rajabali from Troop 156, and I'm talking to you about keeping chicken in city limits. I sent you an email on March 12th discussing this matter and received a follow-up email on the 28th saying I would hear back if anything was further discussed. I haven't heard from you since the 28th. I was wondering if you'd discuss further.
We actually have had some discussion. It is part of our code and is Mr. Ward or James. It would have to take a change to the code, correct?
Not, yes, it would.
Yes.
Yes, it would.
Yeah.
How many chickens is too many chickens?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
I mean, if you were going to keep chickens and we were going to change the code, you know, what number of chickens is the appropriate number of chickens for somebody to have before it's a farming operation or something like that? That's where my head's at.
What he's getting at is it has to be good for one, it has to be good for all.
Yeah. So if you wanted to keep three chickens...
Yeah.
But we just made chickens okay. A farmer might say, or someone wanting to be a farmer, might have hundreds of chickens, and that might bother their neighbors. So I think that that's kind of one of the issues is, not necessarily what came first, chicken or the egg, but how many chickens or how many of a certain livestock should be permitted, you know, before, or how much land should you have to permit a certain number of chickens or livestock or something to that nature? And I'm not up-to-date on animal...
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's...
When we got the email, we looked at that, and we do allow for it, but there are distance requirements, there are acreage requirements, and those types of things. Do you know those off the top of your head?
Twelve acres.
So we have, in the code, there are certain requirements. It's in the Animal Control section. If you can keep animals in certain distances away from property lines, they're permitted. You know, it does, we do have minimum acreage requirements. You have to have five acres. There's a max number of animals, so it's like one in, I think you can have like an animal for every acre and a half. That's how the thing's written. So I mean, it is restrictive in that regard, but you know, it's, you know, I think the reasoning behind that was, do you, you know, how do you manage this in higher-density neighborhoods and things like that? I mean, you know, on RS-10 lots, RS-5 lots, when you've got a 10,000-square-foot lot, what is a number that wouldn't be, you know, a health, safety, welfare issue for neighboring properties?
If I can bring up, and he prepared this thing, so if he goes through this, you'll see that there's a state law...
Oh, yeah.
That is, that came out in 2024, and the state law already specifies that, you want to say it?
Yeah.
It's the last one.
It's saying, um, sorry. There's a state law prohibiting cities from outright banning chickens on residential lots.
And that state law, that's the reason Livingston changed its rules, because the state law says that more than six, the city can regulate, but less than six.
That's the number, then.
Right.
Six, I found them.
That's why I was trying to say, that's the number.
That's the number.
So this is a state law, and if, in the state law, we actually read it yesterday as a finally, and the state law does state specifically that, oops, I was not supposed to use the word specifically, but that any prior ordinance is moot based on the state law. So the ordinance has to be revisited for the city of Cookeville.
Okay. Well, I think you're, yeah, that is helpful. Thank you, yeah, for doing our homework for us. I appreciate that. I think a great would to be have, Mr. Ward's here, I know we're here, if you want to have a little discussion after the meeting, and we can kind of follow up with this and see where we can go from here. Is there anything else you wanted to say?
I think moving forward, there should be a permit or a website registering coops, like beekeepers do with their bees.
Okay, I like that. All right, well, are you okay? Can we talk a little bit afterward?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for bringing, I think we all got your email. We actually did have that discussion because we talked about how many chickens is too many, and what, you know, what does our, what do our codes say? So if you don't mind, we'll have a little discussion afterwards. Thank you for getting up and speaking, though. That was, and for typing all this up, and didn't take any credit at all down here, so thank you. How old are you? Can you run for city council yet? There's an election next year. You're not old enough yet, are you? Okay, expect to see you on the ballot in a few years.
Councilor, actually, you're working on our citizenship merit.
That's what I was about to call y'all out.
We didn't ambush you on the chickens.
No, this is perfect timing, and I was going to call y'all out. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the council? Okay, go ahead.
Once again, Jeff King, resident of Cookeville, here on my own behalf and no one else. I thank you for coming. I would also say that I would support some consideration of this. I don't know that I'd actually want to have chickens, but I know other cities, and I have friends in similar environments where a limited number of chickens or birds is acceptable, and I personally don't see it as terribly indistinguishable from dogs or a certain number of dogs. There's going to be limits. I don't know what the city limits on the number of dogs you can have outside in your yard is, but in terms of a nuisance to your neighbors, I think it could be managed appropriately. And it's something I actually would like to see, not for myself, but it makes sense in a sort of modern, more, I don't know what the right word is, but, you know, a way of providing alternatives and providing alternatives, more sustainable, environmentally sustainable food, various other issues. So I would be in support of this, and thank you, young man. Thank you, Adam, for coming and speaking as a citizen. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You know, home-raised eggs are a lot better, aren't they?
Yeah, they are. I agree with you on that, too, yes.
I'm lucky enough to get some farm-raised eggs myself, and so I can support that 100...
Roosters are every year.
I might have to figure out a program for the roosters.
Roosters here, yeah. Roosters.
Yeah, any ideas?
He's homeschooled, and this was his own homeschooled project, so...
Think he should get an A.
But what happened was, last year, we got a citation, and he had to get rid of all of this chicken. If I show you the picture of him and the chicken...
Oh, don't show us the pictures.
You'll feel bad.
Okay, yes, don't show us the pictures.
I already feel bad.
Okay, can I have what you want, no?
Once that happened, he wrote that email, and then he filed out above the state law.
Yeah, thank you. Like I said, thank you for bringing it. Yeah, we'll definitely talk after here.
Do you keep roosters, too?
No. We give all the roosters away.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the council? Oh, all right, let's go. Do they get extra badges for speaking?
What this is.
Okay, I don't know what this is. I love it, go ahead.
My name's Alex Ansamango. I'm from Troop 156 in Cookeville, Tennessee. I was wondering when the bathrooms at the Park East Skate Park will reopen, because I know they got closed due to vandalism. I was just wondering when they'd possibly reopen.
Rook, you're still on duty.
You're going to retire tomorrow, yeah.
You got to retire.
Jeff.
What they want to hear.
That's sad, man. I'm sorry, man.
I know, the vandalism had become a problem to the point that y'all were having to close it multiple times, so it unfortunately became an issue of, you know, we can't have nice things because people kept vandalizing us. Yeah, I think we can have some discussion.
We are reevaluating that.
Okay.
Have to do some repairs to see if we can open those. Do we have cameras or anything up there?
Something we just, yeah.
Do they work?
But not inside the restroom.
Not inside the restroom, no, no, no.
I know that, but do they work?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Do you like the skate park?
I do. I try to go once a week.
Nice, okay, yeah.
I say very quickly that we had the entire skate park closed for a while because of those issues, and we got requests from the community that uses that to open the skate park, but leave the restrooms closed. Many comments were, we don't care about the restrooms. I understand that if you're going to be there for an extended period of time, it's very convenient to have, but we did get that request, and we opened the skate park again, but left the restrooms closed.
So, yeah, we'll go back, we'll have that discussion and see, yes.